Hi.
Can you tell who's in the room in Italy?
What's that?
I think we're ready. You're getting the, you got the high sign?
Yep.
Okay, call to order, the meeting of the Rockport Select Board. It's Tuesday, October fourteenth, six P M., and we're here in the Parker Room, lower level of the Opera House. And we have a nice group of citizens here, as well as the Select Board. First item is, we have a public hearing on our November fourth special town meeting, November four, twenty twenty five referendum. And we'll just go through the articles, and if anybody wants to make any public comment on those articles, just raise your hand and you can come up and make the comments. The first item on the special town meeting warrant, Article two, shall the town adopt amendments to the Rockport land use ordinance regarding cleanup and clarity edits for chapters three hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, and thirteen hundred? And I think that is an accurate representation in terms of cleanup and clarity edits. Any comment? Doug? Number, Article three, shall the town adopt the amendments to the Rockport land use ordinance regarding section eight one six, planned unit development? Any comments? Moving on, Article four, shall the town adopt the amendments to the Rockport land use ordinance regarding section nine oh two, village district? Any comments? Next, Article five, shall the town adopt the amendments to the Rockport subdivision ordinance regarding cleanup and clarity edits for Articles three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten? Any comments? And then Article six, shall the town repeal the Town of Rockport sewer ordinance and replace it by adopting the Town of Rockport wastewater ordinance? Any comments? Okay. Close the public hearing for the November four town, special town meeting referendum. Next, we have a public hearing on, and just for folks watching, these amendments, if you're curious, those can be found online or in the town office, if you want to read more about what's on the warrant articles. Next is a hearing on the general, on general assistance. And this is a notice of general assistance ordinance amendments. We're holding a public hearing to give interested members of the public an opportunity to comment on the amendments to the general assistance ordinance appendices for A through H, October one, twenty twenty five, to September thirty, twenty twenty six. And again, these amendments are also available for review at the town office, in the general assistance office. Are there any comments on the general assistance ordinance amendments? Okay, hearing none, that hearing is closed as well. Next, we have amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Next, public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, next, town manager's report and updates, John.
Thank you. I'm a little, I'm a little nervous, because I'm not usually providing this pre-election report with the town clerk in the room, so I'm gonna look at her eyes to make sure I'm saying everything accurately, but yes, indeed, the, the election on November fourth is proceeding ahead as scheduled. We do have a very small list of items on the Rockport ballot. There are two items on the state ballot, but there have been a number of lawn signs all over the place. If you can make sense of what those lawn signs say, or don't say, you're doing better than most of us. But there is plenty of information out there. We do have information on our website about what those sample ballots, which you'll face when you walk into the voting booth, or you have the opportunity of using absentee voting. You can request a ballot at any point between now and October thirtieth at three thirty. So if you're coming in to register your car in October, and you're there next week, feel free to cast a ballot, and you can ask about the availability of helping to assist others in your, your, your household, or others, to, to make sure if they can get their ballots as well. So that's a, it's a very seamless process, as it works now. If you have questions about how absentee balloting works, I know certainly there's a lot of questions that are going out there regarding different things that are in the media, or, or whatever they might be, in the, in the political realm of how people are voting on these varied questions, question one in particular, certainly ask our town clerk, our deputy clerks, assistant clerks, they know this process inside and out. They know it's a very, it's a very secure process that we have in the state of Maine, and we have a great deal of respect, and we believe that these folks take this responsibility very seriously, not just in Rockport, but all those I've ever worked on across the state. We do have information about dog licensing. Tomorrow, dog licensing is open, so, you know, that's, I don't know if that makes this dog licensing eve, or what that works, but in any event, tomorrow you can start licensing your dog for the next year. So make sure you can get involved in that process. We are still looking for two officers to join our police department. There's some information in our, my report about that. Can we, go ahead, I'll stop, John. Yeah.
You kind of skipped over the reimbursement from the state.
Yeah.
I thought we had seventy percent reimbursement. What happened, it's now down to nineteen percent?
No, so, so effectively, the state operated a surplus during that fiscal year, and Department of Health and Human Services came back around to some of these communities, actually all the communities in the state, that particularly in the F Y twenty twenty four year were really hit hard with costs related to general assistance. And so they've come back around, and they've allotted an additional amount above the seventy percent to help reduce the impact to taxpayers.
We're getting seventy plus nineteen?
Yep, there you go, yeah.
Okay, well, that's nice.
It's a nice thing, right? Yes.
I missed that part of the memo.
There wasn't gift wrapping on that package, but it was a very nice present, so very, very pleased with that.
While I got your attention.
Fire away, yeah.
You're gonna go to the police department, and
I was, yeah.
It starts out with five hundred and ten calls, which, I don't know if that's a lot or little, is, can you give me some context again for these?
Yeah, well, I, I, this is, uh, these are, this is the, the department head-driven part of the, of that, when I get the call volume, I can certainly ask, we're gonna put it in, that we'll make sure that there's some context to it.
If we're gonna put it in, please give me some historical, so I can understand, is it more calls or less calls?
Yeah. That's fair, that's fair. So to, to continue through, a lot of work in public works over the last month, in particular, last six, well, really last all, the entire summer. The biggest, most notable change is the addition of the, a four-way stop at the intersection of Rockville and South Street. It's been, that has been a, something that's been discussed for decades, frankly, and the, when the, both the police chief and the public works director come to you and say, this is, this is a good idea, when the crash data says this is our most dangerous intersection out of any, of all the town managed intersections, these are the things you take into consideration. And so you have to obviously do it the right way, make sure there's notice, make sure people understand well before they, they get to that stop sign, that something different is in that area. And so we've, we've received a lot of positive comments, in fact, almost all positive comments regarding the change. In fact, Dave St. Laurent, who's the public works director in Camden, who lives in that neighborhood, gave me a call shortly thereafter, and said, who did that? Who's the engineer? And I said, well, it was our public works director, you know, Mike Young, and, and he's like, they did great, they knocked it out of the park. Dave's wife had actually been in an accident in that very intersection a couple of years before, and so unfortunately, there's a lot of people who are unfortunately in that, that category, and so we're obviously, whatever we can do to make, make sure people are safe, and while those of us who've been through that intersection a million times are used to having to maybe take that second look to make sure, because people do like to move on Rockville Street, slowing everyone down is probably not a bad thing, so. Including, to move on through the road projects, it's been a busy time. Paving is now complete on the town road projects for the, for this year. There are some additional paving that will occur, that sort of on the sides of roads, and, and, you know, driveway aprons and things like that, but not, you know, obviously the straight ahead, you know, closing down a cross street, or, or, or working on a meadow street, that sort of large-scale impact is, is now over. Rowdy's paving has done a great, did a great job for us. That was not a contractor we had used recently, nor anyone in, in the recent area, and this region had, but it went, went quite well, so. Very appreciative to their work, and, and to the neighbors and all the residents, because it's, it could be a very large disruption, not just through the paving process, but when we're replacing culverts, and we're ditching in front of a home, and, you know, certainly a lot of, a lot of people think, oh, I own right to the, the edge of pavement, and what are you doing digging up my front yard? And so we try to be, as a town, very, you know, compassionate about that, but, you know, there is actually a right of way that goes far beyond that extended of the pavement, so it's something we, we work through. But transitioning now into the fall, brush cutting, and looking ahead towards next year's projects will begin. Porter Street is one that just, for whatever reason, the type of, whatever grows there seems to grow fast, and so we'll be up on Porter Street, and of course, that's a, that's a road with visibility is very much a challenge for those coming along, and we have a lot of traffic to the hospital that take that, that cut through as a way to, to get to the hospital in a, in a quick manner. So that's something, we'll have signage and work crews in the area and all that, but, but certainly that's something to keep in mind. On the harbor side of things, or excuse me, I want to, DOT, the Route One project is proceeding along. It's very exciting to be able to drive from, past sea light and, and not worry your, your vehicle will fall in a, in a ditch, or in some sort of the middle of, of the road. It's gonna be a great, for the plowing crews, everyone's gonna be really excited about that. And we've obviously have some data in here about our, our call volume for fire and EMS. Obviously, it's, we've, we have these sort of peaks and valleys. August was a relatively slow time comparatively. September sort of got back on schedule, but it is, is up and down on the EMS side of things. We will have some of our financials will be, will be coming from this. Obviously, when you have a call, it's very easy to get call volume as of September thirty, but there's a lag of two, three weeks in terms of what you've billed out for that month, and what you've collected for that month. So that, that, in addition to this, is also coming together, and that will go into your quarterly report, financial report for June, for as of the end of September thirty, so your Q one. And I think that's really about it for, for me. The other thing I want to say is, I want to give a thanks to our, our crew at the town office, our clerks' crew. This is the first, you know, beginning of the weekday, following, you know, right before our due date for taxes. It's a big, it's a big deal, it's a lot of people coming in, wanting to pay off their tax bill, and it's, it's a really, it's a challenge, and, and when you're in the middle of election time, it's tough, so. Got through it, everyone got through the day unscathed, but it's, it's a, it's a big deal, so very appreciative, residents coming by have been very warm and pleasant, it's, it's difficult thing to write that check, I, I don't dispute it, but certainly appreciate everyone's abilities, we all moved through this, so that's it.
Great, and can residents put, there's a mail slot on the side of the town office, they can also drop checks in there?
Yep, absolutely, yeah, now, there is, there's also the ballot drop box too, so the
Right, yeah, not in there.
Just want to distinguish the two, right? So we have the ballot drop box, which is near the front door, and there's a drop box that's on the side.
It's really just a mail slot in the door.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
So
If you don't want to wait in line
Yep.
Because that, the line can get, it might be a long line tomorrow.
Absolutely, and we have, we have a basket as well in the, in the lobby, so that's, that's also, if people want to just walk in, walk past the line, drop it in the box, they can do that too, so.
That's good, and we appreciate everybody making those timely payments, because I think, as we indicated before, we have to pay the county and the school first
Yep.
Before we can pay for Rockport town matters, so it, it really does matter to get those tax payments in on time.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other, any questions for John on the report anymore? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. These are the meeting minutes from September eighth. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go ahead, Kim.
I make a motion to, to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, John? Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Okay. And Michelle is obviously not here tonight, so it's a four zero unanimous vote. Next are our action items. The first up is, we have two applicants for committees, and both are for the Conservation Commission. First is John Brock. Is John here? Let's see, John? So John is applying to become an associate member on the Conservation Commission, and he submitted an application, and there's information in there about his background and his interest in doing that. The next is Richard Beckett.
I just jump in.
Oh, go ahead, John.
John gave a nice talk to Rotary a couple of weeks ago, exceptional qualifications for this, so I'm really excited to see him.
And he's attended the last couple of meetings for the commission too, and right on. In fact, both of the applicants have.
Great, great, and Richard's here, so Richard, do you want to come on up and just give us a little?
Just to clarify, I think it's the
Come up to the mic, because everybody watching in the video
Yeah, sure.
Get your voice.
Sorry, just to clarify, I think I applied for the associate member.
Ah, did this get
And John was the permanent member.
I, I
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So our agenda's got it backwards.
Stop those around, though.
Okay. So John is applying to become
The full member.
The full member, and Richard is gonna be the associate member. Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and do you want to give us a little information about yourself?
Yeah, sure, so my, my name is Richard Beckett. Myself, my wife moved to Rockport about a year and a half ago, and I have a background in marine, marine sciences, marine biology, fisheries and aquaculture specifically, and I have an interest in conservation, so.
Great, sounds like a great background to have, and help out Bill Bowes right here, and he's on top of all the water sampling in the harbor, so bring him on. Okay, any questions for Richard? All right. Thank you, Richard.
Sure.
We can
Thank you for, thank you for saying yes.
Okay, so you're gonna
Do we need to
I don't know if we need to, it just, the motion is to just approve the two committee applications, but we could specify that, I think the record's pretty clear, but, so move to approve two, two committee applications.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Sounds like great additions.
And thanks for coming tonight, and thank you for volunteering with, that kind of background is really helpful for the town, so appreciate that. All right, next is act on Knox County Budget Committee Representative. So Bob Duke, so Knox County is, as I indicated a little earlier, when you get your tax bill, we all get billed a share of the Knox County budget, of the school budget, and of the town budget. And as part of the structure with the, with the county, Rockport has a representative on the Knox County Budget Committee, and Bob Duke, for some years, was the Rockport representative on the Knox County Budget Committee, and he resigned last year, and it, this is something somebody could have run for in, at our June election, but nobody did, and because of that, the Select Board is now in the position of appointing someone to that position. And Doug Cole has generously agreed and volunteered to take that position, and I, I think that's particularly good, because Doug's on our town budget committee, and I think there is some benefit to having someone who is on our town budget committee, but is also working with the Knox County budget folks. And I think as a lot of us also would like to see throughout, going forward, you know, some efforts at regionalization, where we explore what could be possible to share services, either with the county or with other towns, so obviously having someone who's engaged in the town in the way Doug is, and then working with the county, I think, is, is a good thing. Doug, do you want to come up and say a few words?
I don't have a microphone, I
I, I knew it wouldn't be fair.
You all know me, so you already know that I might not be the smartest guy in the room, but I'm the most annoying, so. I'm here to speak to this. I want to follow up on what Denise said. I was a little bit trepidatious about taking this position after I saw the article in either the Midcoast Villager or Pembay Pilot, I don't remember which one it was, but it turns out that the draft county budget, and it's just a draft, but here's what it is, it's up by over twenty percent, and that's gonna come back to us. And I, I want to do my part to represent the town at these county discussions, but I also want to make clear, so if you disagree with me, you have a chance to vote me down, but I'm a big proponent of regionalization. I think with this increase in the county budget, our previous budgets here that have gone up quite a bit, that I think it's really time to start to think outside the box a little bit, and I think larger towns understand that there's a, an economy of scale to be had, if you can centralize a lot of these various services. In New England, that's frequently not a popular stance. Every little town has its own fiefdom that, you know, largely goes around with emergency services, fire, police, things like that, but it's, I, I think regionalization really, in the long run, is going to be best for the Town of Rockport and other surrounding towns. I realize it's an uphill battle, but we have to start somewhere, so.
Do you feel we have a lot of resistance to that here in Rockport?
Um, I don't, well, let me go back. So this is one of the long-term goals of the Rockport Budget Committee, is to begin to explore regionalization, so maybe not, you know, maybe
I mean, it's in the comp plan, I mean, we, voters have encouraged us to move that direction. I don't, I don't see where the
Well, I haven't looked that carefully at the comp plan, but
That's good, it's always good to be supporting the comp plan, yeah.
I'll take that, and at least start to open those discussions.
So while I got you, Doug, I'm just curious, have you had a chance to dig down into that twenty percent increase, to have a sense of what the heck is going on there? Because the article really didn't give us much information on that.
Well, I think it talked about a seventy-five million dollar new jail.
But that's not in the budget.
That's not in the budget increase.
Well, that's just something coming, I'd have to go back and look at it.
Well, and I think, to be fair to Doug, I mean, this all just came up, and, you know, I, I think there's a meeting Thursday this week. Anyway, you'll get the schedule.
Don't scare him away.
Well, it's a pretty short window, you know, you go in and
Yeah, 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 it's not too bad, I think it pretty much wraps up by the end of the year. I don't know what they do the rest of the year, if they do anything.
Yeah.
So again, you know, that's one of the reasons I thought, well, I can do this for a couple of months.
Yeah, I'd also, maybe you can find out, like, when is that, this is the proposed budget for the next budget year for the county, correct?
That's right.
So when does, when, if that twenty percent increase went through, when would it hit our
Well, that's what's so weird about the county, right?
I know, because they've got a different
They're on a calendar year.
But it would hit us in our next commitment, our next tax commitment.
So October twenty
Vote on the budget, that's when we're gonna see it, and that is
That's right.
That'd be our October twenty twenty six tax payments.
Eight percent of the budget of our
Yeah, seven, eight percent.
Seven.
Seven or eight percent, but it's, that's, you know, twenty percent increase in one year is And I, and, and the other thing to note is that the twenty percent isn't felt evenly, because all of our property, our property taxes are, how we pay our county tax is a separate, it's a separate calculation, so that will rise and fall, some will be up twenty-two, some will be eighteen, fifteen, it depends upon
Valuation, correct?
Exactly.
So in our valuation went down last year, so, last cycle, so our tax, our share of it went down a little bit.
But when, which ballot, at, at the end of this year, December thirty first, when the budget is
Finalized.
Clarified.
Yeah.
When will that show up on our ballot?
It won't be, well, it'll be our ballot in June.
Yeah, so
This coming one.
So the, yeah, the county
Okay.
Well, let me, let me back up, so the county, the county commissioners and the county budget committee through that process, they finalize their budget on their own, but, but effectively, the three commissioners set their own budget.
Right.
There's, there, there is, so for those who are listening, we don't vote on a county budget, there isn't a, a ballot that we all cast, but as we go through the budget process, for those who are probably unfamiliar, Doug certainly is, when we, when the Select Board and the Budget Committee sit down to talk about the budget, the town budget, the, where the schools and the counties fit into that conversation, because obviously, what, what everyone in that room is looking at is, what's the financial impact overall? And not just the, the town's impact, but what are the schools doing, what is the county doing, because we're all trying to look at the overall mill rate and, and try to keep that in check best as one can. So that, that impacts, that conversation, if, if that twenty percent were to continue and to be approved by the commissioners, that's something that the, the board and, and the Budget Committee would be discussing this spring as having an impact directly
But we couldn't do anything about it, right?
No, no.
It's done.
It would be included then in the June ballot.
Well, we don't vote on it.
The rest of the, no, no, but
Yeah.
Part of the budget, I don't
Well, it's
It's part of the budget.
It's part of how you all make a decision, but you don't vote on it, that's part of your budget, right? That's, that's why I'm trying to, I know, maybe it's a detail, but
Okay. We don't get to vote on the county budget.
The work we're doing this next couple of months will be reflected in the June ballot.
Yeah.
The work on the Knox County budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So no pressure, Doug, but you're our only chance.
That's right.
One more question for you folks is, how would you like to hear back from me? I don't, I don't think we historically have had much reporting from the Knox County Budget Committee Representative, maybe I just wasn't there, but what do you sort of have in mind as we go along? Anything? Does it matter?
Well, let's see, on, we'll have our meeting November eleventh.
Tenth.
Tenth.
Ninth before Veterans Day.
Oh, Monday, that's right, we're not moving to the Tuesdays, yeah. So our November tenth meeting, maybe it'd be, I think it'd be good to hear an update on
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to come and
Yeah, let us know what, what's happening at the county, you should be pretty far along, I think.
Grab a microphone.
Oh, right, yeah. We haven't even voted yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Kim said we haven't voted.
We haven't voted yet.
No, no, right, yeah.
And I, if I could just add one thing about the cost, where the cost is coming from, part, part of what was outlined in the, in the, that, that report on Midcoast Villager is that part of those increases, and again, that's not part of the county tax, but part of the increase is expected to be seen by the municipalities, are increases to the dispatching service, and those involved understand, but we were at a, we've been at crucial points where that service could, and could shut where that service could and could shut down or could be transferred to other counties because we didn't have staff available to operate.
And that's the 911 service.
That's the 911 service. And so there are some impacts that are likely coming as a result of that in terms of a need to pay people a wage that will allow people, them to hire and be competitive in that marketplace. So it's not part of the county tax, but will be part of the county budget discussions as hopefully Doug and his brethren get to work, so.
One thing I noticed about that, and not to tie things up, but the 911 budget is actually a portion to each town by its population. The problem is, Kim may be able to back this up. You know, I'm one of those scanner geeks. And I can tell you the demand that the town of Rockport places on the 911 service is probably the least of all 10 towns around here. You know, they're always running to St. George, Union, Rockland. You know, the scanner is just alive with those different towns. And there's very little police activity and stuff for the town. So I personally would favor a per-use fee, you know, and just apportion it on how much each town uses the 911 service.
So Doug, can you get a report to show, what you're giving me is anecdotal information.
Yeah, yeah.
But they probably have a report that can outline just what that is and line it up against the population.
You know, I'm sure there is that, but I'm the new guy on the block. We have two months, you know, I'll do what I can. But I'm not optimistic over such a short period of time, so.
Well, thank you for stepping forward and volunteering for that.
Did we vote?
Yep, well, we're going to have a vote.
You're going to have to vote.
I just was thanking Doug for his.
Oh, sorry.
Wow, it's a tough crowd tonight. Okay, do we have a motion to appoint Doug?
I move to appoint Doug Cole as Rockport Knox County Budget Committee Representative.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Because he needs more to do anyway.
That's right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Next is Act on Harbor Strategic Plan Task Force Recommendations. Bill, do you want to come up and?
Oh, boy. No, I think, Bill, this group, let me just, as a bit of very surface-level preface of this. This has been a really dynamite group from beginning to now as we've, we're getting here towards the end of the process. You know, there are a lot of, when you talk about something that's the heartbeat of your community, you have to be very careful and you have to be very wise in who's involved and there, ensuring that everyone's heart is also pulling in the right direction, right? And we're dealing with factors that go beyond what I might want or any of us here might want. There are factors that are very real. I remember rain pelting myself in the face, and Bill's there, and it's pelting us in the face. And we're watching Abby crawling over things that, we're not going to tell the insurance folks what she was doing, but she was doing some good stuff on behalf of the town of Rockport. But we're facing challenges that are far beyond what's normally there. And so over the last four years that I've been here, we've been doing that on far too regular a basis. There's the simple things of filling a hole that just appears in the middle of a normally grassed, beautiful piece of lawn. And then there's Abby crawling over, we're not going, we're not going to talk about, that didn't happen. We've been facing some real challenges in this town. And there are some great ideas, some great thoughts. I really, I know I'm not supposed to do this at the outset, but I'm not going to say a lot after this. I got to commend the committee. This task force was really superstars beginning to end. You know, it's not often to have filmmakers able to make films that actually show your process. So that's pretty cool. Thank you, Josh. But this is, this is an effort that if we, this is what, this is, this was such an effort that you hope the worst thing we could do is let a speck of dust grow on what this is on a shelf, right? Because we have to get to work. And it may not be, we have to go out there tomorrow, but we've got to work fast. Because unfortunately, Mother Nature and the forces that are forcing Mother Nature's hand are making us work fast. So I talked a little bit about here, about hopefully the next iteration of what we're talking about here, whether it's an implementation group to assist staff. But I think, I love Bill and a lot of the committee here, really appreciate their efforts, so thank you. But really impressed with what we came up with. And I think it serves us all well as we go generations and decades into the future to solve these challenges, so.
Thank you. And I may be sitting here, but Josh is here, and Bob Colmar's here, and Doug Cole's sitting back here, and I think I saw Nancy.
Nancy's here, Abby's here.
Yeah, and Abby's here, as well as Orion. So it was, it was a good team effort and very broad set of capabilities that we were able to bring to the table, so worked out well.
Yeah, it's a very impressive report. I don't know how many people have attended the various public meetings on this as well. But then you all came out with the final report, which was, I don't know if it was part of our packet. It probably is now. We got it in two.
The link, yeah, the file was too big.
Yeah.
Last time, talking with a couple of you, it was, that was a little too big. So I was trying to send it as a separate link, so that way you could, you know, your email inbox could breathe a little bit.
But folks are able to pull that up from the town website.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, and the report, the final report was effectively a compilation of all the things that had already been presented to the town. It wasn't like somebody, no one got brought in sideways and said, oh, yeah, we're putting the Ferris wheel down there. Didn't we tell you that? None of that stuff is there.
There used to be one.
It's title-powered.
No, pump-pipe golf course.
It was, oh, a while ago, it was there.
Well, it's, you know, and obviously from the report, you can read comments and sort of see where the survey responses came. I don't know, I mean, there's a lot in there, so it's sort of hard to, I don't know if we should try to summarize it tonight.
I wasn't planning to.
You weren't planning to, that's fair.
Liz told me I couldn't.
Yeah. Anyway, I think a lot of the folks here have been following it already pretty closely. And we know there's, you know, opportunities that, you know, sort of improve the parking and the pedestrian access, pedestrian safety, but are really fundamentally focused on the, you know, protecting the erosion and the impacts when the storm surges come in.
Yeah, that's on the public side. On the working waterfront side, we've got some, you know, grade elevations and modifications to the boat club. We've got some additional walk paths to get actually access into the park. So if you want to ride your bike in, you don't have to come down the road any longer.
That's actually an area, not to, because I was part of the Village Partnership Initiative Task Force that really worked on paths and all of that kind of thing. And I was curious, we sort of have these two different groups sort of working on the same thing. And I wondered why, in my mind, those paths are, it's wonderful to be able to use the harbor, you know, make it more accessible to the public. But in terms of climate change and sea level rise, are those pathways really part of, I mean?
There was definitely a blend of resilience with use. And, you know, there's no bright line between them.
Right.
And then ultimately, you know, Blake Sandborn of Richardson and Associates is a, you know, landscape designer, if you will, that understands, you know, public use of spaces. And so, you know, there was some, I'd say blend a little bit away from the strict resilience stuff. But if we're going to spend all this money on the resilience thing and not improve the other pieces.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, the Village Partnership Initiative is to, I mean, that work was done. And I'm not, you know, that's just, in my mind, as I was reading the report, and I really appreciated, I mean, all of this, all of the work. And I think the public has received it very well. And it's, I'm glad we're getting on this because it is really critical. The paths just seem to me, I guess we just sort out because we now have two different.
Yeah, we look if we have any conflicting things. You know, widening the entrance road a little bit, so it's not quite as death-defying when you're trying to get in and out, that kind of thing, so.
And I think it's just a question of where we get the money to do all of that.
Well, that's the next step.
John.
Well, that was part of the question. I thought it would be good, while we've got Bill, if you can, give us, give the Select Board a sense of what would be the first, what would be the most significant or highest priority pieces of the plan?
John, let me interrupt, only because I think part of what we want to do tonight is set forth a harbor strategic, sort of a working group to try to answer those very questions. So rather than putting Bill on the spot, because I don't think that's.
Well, it'd be the world according to me, okay?
But I think our goal is to, you know, have a group of citizens.
I thought the plan gave us some guidance on that, that's why.
Not really. It was more the concept plan along with funding sources, but not necessarily what are you doing first and what makes the most sense. That is the next thing that has to occur, which is what Denise is referring to, is an implementation plan, a project plan, if you will, that, you know, puts the whole pieces, all the pieces together. Not only, you know, what we'd like to build, but how are we going to fund it? And what's the timing involved, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I guess I'm also working with the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Task Force, trying to anticipate a conversation there of, you know, what part of this do we bring into that discussion? So.
Yeah, or do we, because tonight, part of what's on our agenda is to establish a Harbor Strategic Plan Implementation Task Force.
So they might have to talk together.
Yeah, so then that group would sort of take, I think, my understanding from what's written here is, and I think that makes a lot of sense, is take this report in the same way that the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Task Force are taking the comprehensive plan.
You need shorter names for these tasks.
I know, I'm like, I'm sure there's an acronym.
Acronyms, yeah.
I couldn't come up with it right now.
Well, let me just jump in a little bit on that conversation then. Are we thinking for the Harbor Strategic Plan Implementation Group that the members will come from the group that Bill had organized?
I think that if they want, I think that would make sense.
Well, I'm just thinking about how long it might take somebody who wasn't involved to get up to speed.
Right.
So I would, I would be biased towards grabbing people who have already been up to their eyeballs in the conversation.
Yeah, if they want to be part of it, we certainly would.
Because we need the information for our task force sooner than later.
So I think that the idea here is, one, speed is, well, speed is important. So there isn't a ramp-up period, slow down the ramp-up period. Potentially, there could be some overlap in the individuals who are serving on both groups.
But we've got one.
Possibly.
Yeah, more than one.
You know, possibly a couple.
Well, we got five. Five is on both. Who else?
Oh, and I'm talking about overlap.
I think Bill will.
I think the idea, though, is no more than three. And really, you know, I would also say this. I think if we had a staff person who, this was more necessary, I mean, Abby's certainly going to be actively and gave to this, but, but there's a, there's a little bit of a wonkiness, sorry, guys. No slight intended here, but that needs to, like, assist, you know? And so I think that there's a small group of implementation that's partnering with Abby to sort of get this where it needs to go next. And I think there probably will be a great deal of overlap. If there needs to be independent meetings with comp plan, you know, that implementation, it can. It certainly can. But I don't, I think that, I think that problem will probably solve itself, is my, I know that maybe is kind of cryptic, but I think it is true.
But I'm venturing out here that we're not just going to say, this task force, you guys just run with it, whatever you want to do. And the Comprehensive Plan Task Force, you do what you want to do. I think there's going to be a natural, you know, discussion between them at certain times.
Yeah, I was going to talk about this in my liaison report, but I'll jump ahead a little bit. Part of our next step is to identify the key committee or task force with each one of the 155 goals. And to bring them in so we can focus on just their portion of the comp plan. So like I say, sooner than later would be good to figure out who's going to be on this. Like, I'm talking like within a week or two. So we can keep on our schedule to deliver, you know, get through the whole 155 goals by November. So we're trying to move along, as you're going to hear, but.
That's awesome.
So two more members, I think. I can tell you we got one.
Good, that's great.
I haven't asked them yet, but I think we count on it. So two more would be good.
Yeah.
And if we could, you know, look at the members.
So now you've switched, now you're talking about two more members for the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Task.
Harbor Implementation.
So that's, at least what's projected here is keep it small, three members.
Yes, so I'm saying I got one of three, I think, I think.
Okay, well, let's create it first.
Okay, all right.
And then we can staff it.
All right, I'm just trying to jump ahead of you a little bit.
Okay, well, we got to, all right, so we have two motions. I think I divide them out. One is to approve the Harbor Strategic Plan Task Force Recommendations as presented. I had a question. Attached in our agenda is a memo from the Harbor Strategic Task Force, and it has nine additional recommendations that aren't in the report. What's, what's the, do we, is that just for information?
No, that's the recommendation. So in the same manner that the VPI.
So if we approve the recommendation, we are approving those nine.
That's right.
As well as what was in that report.
That's right.
Denise, just for your own, just for clarity, we discussed this a lot with Abby.
Okay.
And with others, so these did come out of the blue.
No, no, I, they don't read like they did. They read like things we've been talking about for a while. I just, because it's sort of, we have the report, but then we have this separate. I just want us to be aware of what we're actually approving.
So this, it's modeled after the VPI. So the VPI effort, you may recall, we had, there were nine recommendations that were part of, I think it was nine recommendations that were part of the, Doug, you can nod if I'm completely off-base. But there was a number of recommendations, I want to say nine or 10. The task force said, you know what? Two of these really aren't fitting with what we feel Rockport is. So we're going to put those two aside, but we're going to recommend the bulk of it, save those two. This is a little different in that we have the recommendation, this is the plan.
Right, we didn't involve the consultants in what do you think of your kayaks?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Or what do you think of mast step, well, they got a little into that.
Well, I think the benefit to this was to put these things, which in individual committees had been approved or thought to be, this is a, this elevates these decisions to the Select Board as sort of a town decision.
Right, right.
So that was the purpose of this. And again, these were worked out with staff.
Okay.
So we're going to vote on the plan and these other recommendations separately?
Well, no, that's what I'm understanding, is when we approve the Plan Task Force recommendations, that includes these.
So that the extra recommendations from the committee essentially would be incorporated in our policy and regulations for the harbor, those aspects of it? Like boat storage and that sort of thing?
I look at, so what I would say is that you're accepting the recommendations. If you were to vote in favor of, as draft, as the motion is drafted, you'd be accepting the plan as written, just as this letter says from Bill and the committee. And then further, those like nine items that are identified here within this letter, you agree with the policy statements here in. However, there would need to be another, another step here, which is, how do you make these, you know, how do you make these policy? So there's a rules document, Harbor Rules Document, where some of these things, and many of these items could, could go to live. But that's, you know, there's another step for that, there's, you know.
But our voting on it, and they're, you know, approving, essentially approving their recommendation, accepting their recommendations, is sort of dictating to, say, the harbor master to make this so.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think so. What I would just say is that the rules document is the document, plus the ordinance, those are the two documents that really drive policy and action in the harbor. And so I think we would want to take these nine and bring a Harbor Rules Document back with some of these incorporated. Yeah, and because that rules document is something that this board approves. It's under your authority.
So we're putting that in motion to make a change?
If, assuming you think these nine ideas are good ones, yeah, that's right.
I think they're excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I notice, I know there had been some talk about winter boat storage in here. here, this is recommending that they remain, that it remain down there. Is that correct? So that's...
Yep.
Okay. And this is obviously, I mean, it's been run by the relevant committees and...
Well, this is the recommendation of this group. I don't want to, I don't want to probably bring, and certainly there are members of, of different groups, parks, harbor, conservation, that were part of this group, but I, I wouldn't...
Okay, then we'll let those folks have been there.
I, I think there's another process, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's just, it's a lot of things that we've been talking about, and to find out tonight, we're being asked to like approve. And they are, you know, I don't think there's anything new in any of them, the stormwater outfall, that's...
For example, the boat storage and the float storage.
Right, we've been talking...
That's policy wise, already been sort of decided upon by the Harbor Committee.
Yeah, and I guess I'd heard it the other way around, that we were not going to be having boat storage anymore down there.
No, you have to look carefully. It has to do with the Boy Scout path.
Yeah.
It's just where it's going to be.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So this is all consistent with what was the Harbor Committee's decision already?
So as long as it all stays, and then it's all contingent on what we need to do for the replacement of the bridge?
Yeah, and that's why I added that little sentence, is so she can still do whatever she wants when in the middle of that stuff.
Yeah, right.
This is going to be chaotic.
We're going to have to be, yep. And the stormwater outfall, is that, because that's sort of new, we haven't really talked about that at this level.
It's, it's floated around as an idea for a number of years, because we've got those bacteria exceedances at Goody's Beach, and I, I in fact just sampled the outfall and the beach for bacteria about two weeks ago. And it's stunning how relational the two are. The Goose River was pretty bad as well, but the, it, it's probably, it's coming out of that outfall. I mean, Bob Kennedy thought that, I thought that, we've all looked at it and said, it's a daggone outfall.
Yeah, which is, just funnels everything...
Yeah, right there. And so the concept is, is to just, the budget I asked Richardson to look at was 400-foot extension into the harbor somewhere, but that's just a number. It's going to have to get flushed out with, you know, a little bit of modeling, not extensive, but just, okay, what, what's going on? And then also the Corps of Engineers and any other perm, you know, D E P, you know, other permitting bodies, what are they going to approve, where can we put it? But the idea is just get the darn thing away from the beach, what it comes down to.
And just to clarify that, because I think that sometimes it's maybe a misconception or, or, or no conception in terms of the area that we're talking about. The outfall of the pipe, everyone is certainly aware of it at the beach, but the Ketchman area from which that is receiving water is, goes well beyond the beach, well up...
It goes all the way up the hill.
Up the, up the way, yeah, up the hill, up to Route 1. I mean, this is a, this is a big area. So it's a, this isn't a beach problem per se, it's a, it's a, it's a Rockport problem that somehow we have to, you know, get behind, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's, what we've ended up is with all our road discharges ending up in the, right next to our beach.
Yes, yes.
And I have samples in front of a lab at University of New Hampshire to help us understand what species it is. Is it pigeon? Is it person?
Oh, right.
Is it dog? We can take votes even, if you want.
Well, I thought you had the answers.
Put money on it, yeah, right. It may take a few months to get it back from them.
We don't get the answers.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's been very helpful to sort of clarify what exactly we're doing tonight and make sure we know, we know that. Any other questions? Okay. So we've got the first motion, I would...
It's all one, right?
Yeah, it is written as all, all as one. Then let me talk a little bit about what it says here about the Harbor Strategic Plan Implementation Task Force, and the, with the mission as noted. I think I would go ahead and include the mission in our motion. Mission in motion?
Okay.
Because otherwise you have...
Can we separate these out, Denise?
Would you like to do that? That's fine.
Yeah, just to move things along, because I have a question about that mission statement.
Okay, well, let's move forward then in approving, so do we have a motion to approve the Harbor Strategic Plan Task Force recommendations?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just want to echo all the sentiments I've, we've heard, but Bill's done a great job leading the ta, the committee, the whole committee were, he did an exceptional job of making a contribution and really looking at this, and the consultants were great, Blake and Todd.
And all the task force members.
Yeah.
All the task force members, but the, the consulting firm, Richardson Associates and W S P came in on time, on, you know, on budget, did a little bit of extra in there and still kept char, you know, soldiering on. So it's a great plan, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you to all of you who are here, who participated in that. Okay, let's vote.
That's in favor, right?
Vote yes.
It better be.
Okay, all those in favor, four zero. Next is establish a Harbor Strategic Plan Implementation Task Force. Here, the, John has recommended to us that the mission be to assist staff with the creation of an implementation plan for the Harbor Strategic Plan that phases the construction and funding of the plan in a manner which recognizes the conflicting forces of climate change and fiscal cost to the community. John?
Before we move to, to the motion, can I, I just, the word conflicting in there, John, I keep tripping over that, because I don't think it's the right, right word, right choice of word.
What do you want to change it to?
Well, I'm trying to get at what John was trying to say.
I think what I heard, what I'm reading it to mean is competing, maybe, it's the idea, yes, climate change is happening, you get those storms like we had two winters ago now, and you're just like, whoa, we're way behind the ball here, we got to do it. But we also have our taxpayers to consider and where we find the funding, federal...
Competing would be a better word, I think. Conflict, it sounds...
More negative.
Yeah.
We don't like conflict. Okay, competing is good.
All right, thank you.
If that's, works very well.
Sorry to...
Okay, and the idea would be that it would be a small task force, no more than three people, and work with town staff to implement this.
Which town staff are we thinking, John?
Well, we've got two dynamite folks in the back of the room, Abby and Orion, get, get the first, the first crack at the, at the work, yeah. They, and they've already obviously worked with the task force and the prior version, so keep on going.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right. Do we have a motion?
I, I move that we establish Harbor Strategic Plan Implementation, Implementation Task Force with the mission as previously stated.
Perfect.
With the amended word of competing.
Yeah.
Competing. Okay, Michael, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Okay, great, four zero. Okay, and we'll...
Thank you.
Do we need applica, applications for the task force? Is that...
We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get them out. So that would be on your, your agenda on November 10th.
Great. All right. Thanks, thanks, everyone.
Thanks all.
Okay, next is act on Midcoast Regional Housing Trust resolution. And we have John Goss here, who is President of the Board of the Midcoast Regional Housing Trust.
Yes, and Peter Gross, board member, is deciding to remain in the audience, but...
But he's here for moral support and support for you.
He would have backed me up if I, if I draw a blank.
Yeah, good, good. John, do you want to just give us just a quick background on what this resolution is about? And, I mean...
Certainly.
Okay.
So the, the Midcoast Regional Housing Trust is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and in order, when you apply for a 501(c)(3), there are six, excuse me, in section six, there are five exemptions to serving low-income populations. And one of those exemptions is to lessen the burden of government, and whatever that has to be, whatever that is, the government has to have written validation that they are supporting what is being done in, like in a comprehensive plan or in ordinances. And Rockport has that, of course. So the, we received that from the city of Rockland, the county seat, for a 501(c)(3) status, but was, as we moved to different municipalities to create housing, and because housing is so expensive, it is going to exceed the, the low-income need, which is not insignificant, but it does, if we want to do workforce and missing middle income, we have to stretch that up. And that's what the, our 501(c)(3) is that.
Yeah.
So when we work with the municipality to create housing, we just request that you offer us a resolution of naming us an essential partner in doing it. It's a little bit of cover ourselves should, in, in the event of an audit, but it's also, we want to get the sense the town wants this, because Knox County's a big place, and if it's not wanted, we don't want to be spending a lot of time trying to do it.
No, and we're so glad you're, you've got some, your eyes on some projects here, so we're excited about that. John?
So I, just a couple of questions. So is your, this isn't necessarily a requirement of the IRS to qualify as a 501(c)(3), it's just something to kind of round out the, the profile?
It, it is a requirement. They, they...
It is a legal requirement.
I mean, you have your 501(c)(3) status, and whatever we do tonight isn't going to affect your 501(c)(3) status.
Correct. But it is, there is, it's not definite that just because the county seat, city of Rockland, gave us that resolution, that we can do anything, we can do this in all parts of Knox County. And...
So if you, your housing projects in Rockport, this is a way of making sure you've got the paper trail to show that your 501(c)(3) requirements are met for the housing project in Rockport?
I didn't know there was a regional footprint to your 501s, at first I've heard of that.
No, no.
It's Knox County. I mean, and, and it, it actually officially, it is Knox County and associated communities. So let's say Lincolnville, we're an associated community.
So the, the phrase essential partner has some significance in the world of IRS?
It's, it's IRS talk.
Okay, and does it, does it, this preclude us from having other essential partners?
No, 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 no.
So it's non-exclusive?
No, oh, absolutely, yeah.
It supports what Midcoast Regional Housing Trust is all about, which we're all favor of that. Another group, say Habitat, could come forward and ask for the same thing and, you know...
We would be happy to give it.
Okay.
I, I, I speak for myself. We'll, we'll see how the vote goes, but...
They have your vote?
Not to...
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, I think it's wonderful that this, this will happen in Rockport.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for John? All right, do we have a vote, a motion?
I move to approve Midcoast Regional Housing Trust resolution as presented.
All right, yes.
Second.
Second, Michael. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Excited.
Oh, boy, this one's going to take a while.
All right, next is act on cemetery rules.
No, you can go up there, it's probably better, yeah. Okay, I'll start on this. This has been a, because it's actually, this effort goes before Liz was, was here. When I, when I arrived in Rockport, integral in my job in, in both of the smaller towns I worked in before was selling cemetery lots. It is not something that they train you for in public management school at University of Maine, but you learn a lot fast. And so through that process and looking at the rules documents that we had...
Don't feel bad, Liz, now that everybody's left.
In place, yeah, they're all. There was, it was clear that, that some, some work was needed. So our, our, the draft that's currently on the books goes to, extends as far back as the late 1990s, and our fee schedule, though it's been updated more recently than that, is severely out of date as well. So over the last several years, first, we, before the cemetery committee was disbanded, and then we had a cemetery working group with some of the, some residents who were previously part of the cemetery committee, our prior town clerk was part of that effort, and then, of course, through the budget process, we had some conversations about cemetery costs and, and obviously the incredible costs that the town is bearing to mow the cemeteries. So, you know, we have six cemeteries that the town directly owns and maintains, three of which we sell cemetery lots in now. But we have three that we maintain, and they are sold out. So, so there are, our options or, or sources of revenue to offset those costs, to not put them on the backs of the taxpayer, are very limited. And then on top of that, you have costs to maintain and make sure that the cemetery roadways are taken care of, and to ensure that when trees come down and break stones, you're, you're dealing with, with all that comes with that. Not to mention Seaview Cemetery, which is Rockport Cemetery, is in Camden. So there's all kinds of fun and games that comes with cemeteries. The Glen Cove Cemetery, that what you would think is majority, Rockport, is actually majority managed by the, the city of Rockland. So up is down, left is right, nothing makes sense. But what will make sense is this rules document is, is a good document. It clarifies who owns cemetery lots. It, it provides someone the right to burial, but not an actual deeded right that would be just as your own deed to your own house is, which is how those have been written for, for years and hundreds of generations. It does update our, our cemetery costs, our lot costs, pretty substantially, but I think they are, as, as you probably saw from the spreadsheet that Liz had compiled in the region, it's competitive. It's competitive with where others are. I think the, the biggest challenge will probably be just trying to ensure people understand how these, how this works. Some of you may recall, we had a moratorium on lot sales in Seaview to those who are not residents for five years, six years, I think, maybe even pre-COVID. So this would do away with that. We have ample room to sell those lots, but given the incredible costs that, and this is the policy that's somewhat in this document, we're, we're saying that taxpayers are paying their share of maintaining that lot. And if someone who is not contributing through their tax bill to maintain those cemeteries, there should be a premium. And I will tell you, and, and Liz will tell you, there are a lot of people, particularly those who live in the town of Camden, who would love to have, to buy a lot in, in Seaview Cemetery. I do not believe that the Rockport taxpayers should, that I feel like there should be a premium that those individuals are paying. And that cost then does go back into our cemeteries, and as you all recall from our conversations through the budget process, our revenues with cemeteries are not anywhere near the costs to actually maintain them. Even with this action, we're still short.
That's what bothers me. I mean, I'm, like, so the fact that the Seaview is in Camden, which I guess you could say is nice that Rockport gets it, but if it's, costs us more than we get, then why do we keep it? I mean, I know it's not that simple, but...
Technically, it's in Rockport, but it, it, it just happens to not be contiguous to the rest of the town.
So it's our town.
It was, it was part of the divorce. That's the way I would, I would, is to, it was our, we got to keep it as part of the divorce.
You can take care of this in perpetuity, yeah, thank you.
So we have an investment account, right, for cemeteries?
Yep.
And is that, when you get fees, does that go into the investment account and generate?
Yes.
How do we...
Now, the challenge is, is that we have to ensure that we're following state law regards to how much we can put aside and are required to put aside. So there's a state law that says that 30% of all lot sales have to be placed in per, in perpetual care. Different, certain towns follow that to varying degrees, and so we're going to make sure our process does follow that, truly. That does leave 70% to be expended at any point in time, which is, which is great, but as, as we went through, that, that, it's not going far enough.
Not with the kind of mowing costs that we have.
Right.
I mean, just mowing costs alone.
And I'll, and I'll add this, none of this, these cemetery rules do not place the town, do not place the responsibility of the town to fix stones. So we just had a situation to fix, to repair stones.
That, that's on, because perpetual care does not include that? So that's on the, the family, or the individual?
So you end up in a situation, now we have insurance that will cover the damage, we hope.
We hope.
To some of that, that occurred at the accident that occurred. Yes.
Yeah.
But that's, stone repair is very, very expensive. And so this is, I mean, if you're someone asking a que, I think the, the right question here is like, this is an incredible investment in, in, and it's not one you're going to get a payback from in any way, shape or form.
Right, but it shouldn't be a net loss to the taxpayers in Rockport for... Right. But it shouldn't be a net loss to the taxpayers in Rockport for non-residents to be able to be buried there.
That's right.
And, and I appreciate that there is a differential in the lot costs. But then, I wonder, is it enough? I'm not trying to undo the work and the thought that you all have put into it.
So, Denise, in your interest, I have some of the same questions and other questions. Do we want to just start kind of going through the document and try to knock them off one at a time? Or do you want to...
Sure. No, that, that was my, I didn't have other issues within the document. I was just trying to make sure financially that we're, and I know that this could be several pieces, you know, maybe at least just let's get this going, but let's do some further analysis on the economics of whether it were going to taxpayers for cemetery care. But you might have some other...
Yeah. I mean, I didn't even know this was in the works until three days ago. So, I have a few questions as a result. And that would be one of them, which is, you know, are we charging enough for non-residents? If we have an opportunity, I mean, if it's desirable, then, you know, maybe we should be charging more for it since we're already way in the hole covering any of our costs.
Right.
And we don't have a very much inventory left to begin with. And we're not adding so many cemeteries soon, are we, John? Do we have any plans?
We have room that we could add at the, at the Rockville Cemetery. There's a pretty substantial piece of land. There's some issues, some wetland issues, but it's not some, we have, we have enough, we have ample space to sell lots at Seaview, and we have room to expand at Rockville. So, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's something that we, I view as a limitation on us at this point.
So, this might be total anathema, but do we have to provide cemetery space to our residents? Is that some obligation? I mean, since we're losing money in running a cemetery, I mean, I understand we have what we have and we got to take care of that and we have those commitments. We still have cemeteries that still have space, so we might as well get the money from those. But in terms of creating new cemeteries...
You're saying, is there a state law that requires every municipality?
Right. Do we somehow have to provide, because...
I don't know the answer.
There are some, no, there are communities that don't have their own cemeteries. What, what you do have a requirement is to maintain veterans' graves.
Okay.
So, every, every veteran's grave must be maintained. That, that's, whether it's private cemetery or a public cemetery, you have to, you have that obligation.
The town has the obligation, too.
Yeah. Now, if the vast majority of our, our cemeteries are public, or the vast number of graves that we maintain are public, so it's one of the, you know, it's, it's not an issue. But the Carlton Cemetery, for example, is a private cemetery. That's in Rockport. I believe there's veterans' graves that are in that cemetery. There are others, you know, smaller private cemeteries. And if they're not maintained currently for veterans, we need to know about them so we can make sure that they are taken care of.
But we don't have to provide a cemetery for...
No.
No.
For veterans.
We don't have to provide the space, no. And I, that's, yeah. I mean, the question of expansion is, right, how much, how much do you want to spend? How much do you want to cover? We do have, but again, we have space, that's what I'm saying, we have ample space now. There's rows that we have not yet sold any lots in in West Rockport. We have rows that we have not yet sold any lots in in Seaview. We have more room at Rockville. So, there's room to sell. We're only making, we're only doing roadwork. Some of you may have seen that we completed the roadwork over at Seaview. We'll be moving to Rockville and West Rockport soon. And, but we're only doing roadwork in the areas where we are selling lots. And, and that's it. So, but you still have to mow everywhere, right? You still have to, you know, if there's a tree down, you still have to cut it up and move it off. So, there's, there's no way around that that I can see.
So, moving forward on, at least this fee schedule is better than what we currently have. And maybe the question, I know John's got some more other questions, but, you know, just to step back and think about what it actually costs us to maintain a lot over the perpetuities, really hard to put a number on.
Right.
Yeah. And then, there's also a question I would have about how we're distinguishing one from the other, you know, resident versus, you know, the language that we're using here. I don't know if we might want to look more closely at that.
Yeah.
But this is a one-time fee.
It is a one-time fee.
Yeah.
It's a perpetual care. I don't care how you look at it.
What did we calculate our annual mowing base on this?
It's not a, it's not a moneymaker. It's, there's no way it's ever going to cover the cost. There's just no way.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I haven't done any long math on that, but, you know.
No.
You'd have to sell a lot of cemetery plots to cover even one year's cost, much less ongoing years to take care of the cemetery. So, I mean, it's really kind of a nominal fee.
This is a service.
No matter how high it is, really.
Yeah.
It's a service to the, to the residents.
To the residents. But then, when you're talking about non-residents, then you think, why are we doing that?
I mean, other than in the short term, it could generate some income and so that...
Some of those are obviously summer, summer residents and stuff like that.
Yeah, but the thing is, I mean, I don't know. I, I feel funny about, you know, we're adding significant expense forever for the town, in every cemetery. And we're essentially giving it away. And I understand this is a very, you know, emotional issue for a lot of people, and I'm not trying to be insensitive to that, but, you know.
And we're sort of stuck with, I mean, I wouldn't imagine we'd save a lot of money mowing at Seaview if we didn't sell what's left in terms of the lots there. I mean, we're sort of already in the business, whether we like it or not, and committed to, for the existing cemeteries.
And we're still mowing the area that hasn't been sold.
But we shouldn't be buying new land to expand our cemeteries. It would be a really, at least an off-the-cuff reaction. I don't know if there's...
I mean, just to give a sense of, so, right now, the single grave lot, which would be a four-by-10 lot at Seaview Cemetery, so this proposal puts that amount to $2,800.
For non-resident.
That's a, that would be as if you...
For non-resident.
Non-resident.
For a non-resident, that's right. So, to compare to what other communities are looking at, Camden charges $750. Warren charges between $1,160 and $1,980. That's a five-by-five cremation lot. I really wouldn't compare it to a 10-by-10 or a 20-by-20 because those are what we consider family grave lots, and that's sort of a different category altogether. Thomaston charges $990 for a non-resident. The Thomaston, do you want, what's the $10,800?
That is for six full.
Six full. Okay, so six lots.
So, one full is the $900, and then for six full burials is the $10,800.
And then, Al's head has a single grave for $1,200. So, we're, we're almost double what anyone else would charge for a non-resident, if not more.
Yeah. I mean, I think the question, and I'm not, I think the analysis and all of that makes a lot of sense within this framework of how much should we charge for cemetery lots in existing cemeteries that we have. And maybe it's, we're sort of talking policy, stepping back.
And we did different prices per...
For different cemeteries.
Cemeteries, yes. Because Seaview is, since July 1, I've sold 14 lots in Seaview. And then, my waitlist, everybody calls every few months to see if the moratorium's been lifted. It's all Camden residents.
Yeah.
So, that, I have 12 families on that waitlist.
Yeah.
But...
And we aren't gonna...
Is there really a lot of price resistance, quite honestly? I mean, I, I don't, is it really something people go around shopping based on the price?
No, I do hear, though, that our, that the $350 for, for us, and people can't believe it's that low. I do hear that. And, you know, they're thankful, but there's not, no, not at that time.
That's what our current fee is.
Yes.
So...
For a resident, sorry.
Currently, $350 for a resident in any of the lots, any of the cemeteries?
I mean, this is the least expensive part of the process.
Camden was, oh, for a non-resident.
Per lot? What was that on the record?
Maybe you have one.
I don't know. It's just the pricing, to be worried about charging too much, I don't think that we're anywhere close to that.
No, and I, yeah.
The families that come in and buy, I just had someone buy five lots at Rockville. You know, they, that's what's happening now, is families are coming in and they're buying. I have, somebody else just bought six in Seaview. And then, I have somebody that wants eight in Seaview. So, they're buying, just almost like a family plot.
And are they, is there any discussion of, gee, that's, that's a lot for six lots or 10 lots?
Sometimes. But not, oh, not on the old, on the old price? No, that's why they're buying.
That's why they're, the word's out that the prices are going up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, John, you have other questions or thoughts on it?
Yeah, I do. I just, a lot of us...
And I'll just close out my thoughts on this particular issue. I think tonight, I would be in favor and, you know, we'll have a discussion and a vote, but of approving the increase in fees anyway, because otherwise, we're just continuing to sell lots that are way less expensive than these. So, we might as well get the money in that we can to try to augment the costs of operating the cemeteries, particularly when we're just talking about lots in existing cemeteries. So, most of the costs are, we got to mow them, whether there's people in those graves or not, you know, in those lots or not.
And it doesn't preclude price adjustments in coming years?
Right. Or further discussion about how do we actually make sure we haven't saddled future Rockport taxpayers?
This is getting more in line with what the other, some of the other communities are doing, too.
Yeah. All right, John.
Okay. I've got two, two things going on. I've got my own questions. And then, a couple of people from the community have sent me emails with questions. So, I'm going to kind of bounce around here a little bit.
Sure. Just, can you go in the order of the...
I'm going to try and go in the order. I can't guarantee it.
That's fair. Okay.
Some of it I may circle back on. But just clarify for me, the lot owner...
What page are you on?
Section 4, ownership.
57.
First of all, we're not deeding these lots over. We're, we're retaining the ownership, the town is.
That's right.
So, they're just buying...
Burial.
The right to burial.
The right to bury.
That's it.
In perpetuity. And so, when we refer to lot owner, how do I just, how do I say this?
Well, so it begins with...
It's not owned by the person that's buried.
The real estate is not owned by them. It's the right to use it.
The burial.
I would think that's...
Well, like ownership, person made purchase burial rights in a lot, okay, so when we say lot owner, we're actually just, we're not saying the actual...
The lot shall be reserved for the use of the lot owner.
We're saying the owner of the burial rights, not the lot owner.
Yeah, not the, not the ground.
I think it's a shorthand, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. All right. So, I'm going to try to move along here. Section 5.6 says subdivision of lots, plots, now we've changed the word to plots, is not allowed, which means one burial lot is a plot?
Yep.
Okay.
It should be buried. So, that section is basically, is trying to ensure that those who purchased, you know, who made that purchase, that their wishes are, are carried out.
So, under definitions, it says lot, plot, or burial space.
Okay. So, that's all one of the...
It's all sort of, those terms are used interchangeably.
If you're not related to those persons or whatever, you can't just kind of say, oh, that's been abandoned.
Yeah, that one. That was my uncle's brother's cousin's former roommate. Yeah.
And lots of written consent, as it says.
Right.
Okay. I get confused, because how could somebody who's dead give you written consent, you know? I mean, if they're the...
Descendants.
Be surprised, John. Just kidding.
Lot owner. All right.
Just kidding.
All right. I guess it's, you guys are okay with it. And this discussion of endowment funds is kind of ridiculous anyway, because we don't, we don't have a substantial endowment at this point, right?
It's a...
Have we been setting aside 30% since the beginning of time with these...
State law says you set aside 30%.
But we don't have any...
One of our big investments.
But when you're selling $350 a lot, you're not saving 30%.
It's not like a million dollars in an endowment somewhere for this.
No, definitely not. I wish.
So, what is it, what are we actually kicking out per year on this to be able to...
Well, I think the better, the better way to look at it is, this is going to level set the playing field.
All right. But that's not answering my question.
I'm not going to answer your question. Wait, no. I'm going to answer it in the way of say, this, there are a lot of problems in how this has been organized in the past, and we're trying to get that.
But in the current budget, is there a line where we say we are taking some funds from an endowment?
Yes, exactly. But the, but the percentage number is, that's where it's, it needs, we need to level set this in the document. That's been part of our issue.
But is it $10,000 or $1,000 a year?
Oh, we've used, the amount that we used to pay for the, the road construction, the $50,000 for the road construction was funded and offset by, by the, by what's in the endowment, the work we had on drainage for a couple of years ago.
So, when we have a significant expense, capital expense, we can pull from that fund and...
And, yes. And on top of that, we actually, because of the increasing cost for the mowing, we'd actually, actually artificially increase that amount because we're trying to lessen the impact on taxpayers.
Yeah.
So, that's, and that's, and that's actually something that's been going on for the last four or five years. Well, excuse me, three years, three years, because we have three years of this contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
So, moving on. Again, some of this stuff just trips me up, because I keep thinking the owner is the person that's been buried.
Right.
And how could they ever change the location and pay for that? I mean, some of it is a little ridiculous, but I guess it's...
It's a lot. A lot of it's ridiculous, John. You're not wrong.
All right. So, there was a section 7.1, let me find it.
Proper burial.
Proper burial. So, we have a requirement, I don't see it in this particular one, but it was raised, oh, it's 7.2. Do we require a vault for cremains, containers?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Really? Cremains may be buried in an acceptable cremains container.
I just wondered why we would...
And I can't remember what Ben said the size of that vault was. Ben was going to be here tonight, but I told him he was.
I imagine so it won't just work its way out in the frost.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So, but do we allow, like, stacking of any of this, you know, when we...
Multiple cremains in a lot?
Yes.
Both types of vaults? We can stack them?
Both types of vaults, yeah.
Okay.
But it has a maximum number.
Cremains can be on top of a vault.
Yes. But it has a maximum number listed somewhere else, right?
Yes, right.
This makes me think of, actually, I can tell a story about being in a Mayan jungle, on the Belize jungle at a Mayan tomb. And they used to bury the chief, the new chief, above the, on top of the old chief, and on top of the old chief. So, so grandpa and great-grandpa were literally in the basement.
Oh, my goodness.
You had to be there. I was there. It was a great trip.
I'll take your word for it. Tell me the stories. That's all I want to know.
It gets better. But it was all dry stone and, you know, there's like eight species of venomous snakes in Belize. So, you know, you can imagine what it was like crawling into that one. But anyway. So, moving on. You clarified about town ownership of the lot. Says multiple urns may be required within the same grave site, but it says, one person says it's limited to four urns. That's all, that's the maximum we allow? I'm not sure what, where this is.
Eight-three.
So, yeah, if you go to section eight. So, there's, yeah, there's different types of grave lots. So, you have the single grave lots, you can have up to four. If you're a cremation lot, it's up to two.
Because cremation lots are smaller.
Little smaller. Yeah, four-by-fours largely.
All right. Then, the next section, nine, grave opening.
Yep.
No, that's not, that's not the section. It's, I'm sorry, section 311. I'm backing up here. Sorry, on somebody else's comment.
We're with you. We're with you.
We can do that.
Open May 1, each spring, and close by December 1. Don't we allow people to kind of go through a cemetery year-round?
They could walk through.
I mean, you know, yeah.
I think the road often, so we have the gates that are often in front of the roads, so people aren't driving.
Drive a vehicle through.
Yeah, but you could walk through, you know, I mean.
I don't know if it would be, can we make it shall be open to vehicle traffic? Shall open to vehicle traffic or something?
Well, it's, the opening is a little, it's a difficult thing, because it's also a question of when you're allowed, there's another section that talks about when you'll actually allow
To bury.
burials to occur. So there's also that piece of this, so all of this, there's some years we can, we open the cemeteries in, in April, some years we open mid-May, depending upon weather.
But we allow anyone to walk through a cemetery at any time.
They could walk through, yeah.
Day or night, right.
Anytime.
Yeah, so it's, we're really talking about vehicular, vehicular access?
But I thi, yeah, I think it's clear for the town.
And burial, so we don't allow burial during the winter months, is that basically what we're doing?
That's right, carry a mask in there and visit.
Then another question actually had to do with, and I, I'm not an expert on this at all, other than the question came up, about somebody who's of the Jewish faith, that they are supposed to be buried without a bottom to the vault, so they can be in contact with the earth?
For, there is a special vault that is made for Jewish burials.
Yeah.
It's not the green burial, it's, it's different, but it is a special vault that's, that's open, I think on the top or has some sort of covering, but it's not your typical.
On the top? I think it's on the bottom.
It must be on, I can't, wish Ben was here, he's our, he's our guy.
He's our guy.
But I think it is open on the bottom, or not completely. I don't think it, if I had better words, I don't think.
Something to conform to their religious.
Right.
But we already have that.
But, but we, we do, it doesn't re. If somebody's Jewish and wants to be traditional about it, they can.
They can use our cemeteries.
Be accommodated based on our.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then there was a question about the shrubs and bushes are being allowed, but then this goes to our maintenance. Isn't that just creating more maintenance for us to allow unlimited bushes and shrubs?
Yeah. This is a, so this is a challenge, because obviously you have, this is also, you have past practice, you have people who were buried fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago, and under prior sexton, it may have been allowed, it may have been approved. But you, the only thing that you own is the area within your lot, so it's a very, talk about sensitivity, the sensitivity on this low note is really important. On a pure basis of what's the most economical way to do this would be flat stones, and then we can just mow straight ahead. But that's not, that's not what people seem to want, that's not what people seem to have been allowed to do, so we're accepting of what's there. This actually goes very, goes quite a bit deeper into allowing us to cut back and giving us authority to do so, but.
So we do, in the new, new regulations, we can remove a, a bush or a.
If they're not maintaining, that you could, the town has the authority to remove them.
All right, all right.
We've been hesitant to, to push that largely because we don't have, we haven't had new rules.
So this is important.
What happens is people plant things and it encroaches on their neighbor.
Well, and they move away, and they maybe don't visit.
And it just becomes unruly, and then that's up to usually our assistant sexton trying to keep things, you know, maintained, but there's been a lot in a couple of the cemeteries that they're just overgrown.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so this allows the town to trim or remove.
Right, or remove.
And no compensation.
All right, here's another question from.
So that's a good improvement.
Residents, book, any provision for the placement of a US flag for graves, grave sites which celebrate military service? There are provisions for plastic vases, which is something that this individual never, has never seen in a cemetery. Is that making sense to you?
Where, where are you?
I, I don't know what, what section it's referring to, it's more of a statement that there is no provision for placement of US flag, flag for.
But they do them.
We do them.
Yeah.
We do them.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We just do it as a practice.
Um, I have volunteers for each cemetery and we go out and, yeah.
Okay, it was just that they didn't see any reference.
Provision here.
Maybe they're referencing, like, with the plastic flowers and all, there'd be a little thing in the ground, like a little.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Flags, they just.
They're in a veteran's, like a star, yeah, it's a holder and.
And that goes in there and the flag sticks out of there.
Yep, every May.
Okay, and I think that is all I've got, hang on just a second. There, there is one, so there is a movement right now for green burial, and I realize that's kind of out a whole nother can of kettled fish, let's call it that. But, and we don't really allow green burial anywhere in town, and it would change a lot of things about what we do here, but I know there are a lot, a number of people that are actively promoting green burial looking for.
There's one cemetery in Rockland, I think it's Acorn right now with one section, and that's locally, that's it.
But one of the advantages, you know, I'm not necessarily advocating for that, although I personally might be interested in it, is the maintenance issue is, you know, virtually nonexistent, or, you know, it's not required to be mowed or anything like that, and it allows to be, leave the trees there and everything else, so.
Becomes a park.
Yeah, it becomes a park, and you have a walkway through it, but that's essentially all the maintenance that the green burial sites require, so if we ever do fill up and feel we wanna continue to do this, I think that's an interesting option, and maybe appealing to a lot of people as they change their views on some of this.
Yeah, I, I met with Judy Powers this summer, she was asking questions about how, how we, you know, what our rules say, and I explained to her we were working on this, this document, and it's been, it's been a journey, let's say. But I think, you know, she, you know, she was very much, you know, there's a group that's organizing that's trying to, you know, look for opportunities, and what's the right way to pursue that, you know, that type of, of internment, and I think, you know, as I explained to her, I, my feeling was that the first thing we need to do is get a baseline of having rules that we feel like cover what we're doing now, what we should have been doing, that the, that the rates are within market, that we, you know, just get a baseline, and then there's time to talk about other things.
You know, I, I recognize that.
And she was, she was open to that conversation, continued to talk, so I was encouraged.
There's, there's a lot of details to be worked out with green burial, for sure.
Yeah.
But they are actively looking for, just to, first they have to find the land.
That's what she's saying, yeah.
That's square one, so.
That's important, yeah.
And then we can work on regulations and all that.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Last question I have in, is about the cemetery committee. I realize that's been disbanded. Are we thinking of bringing back some version of that, or?
So I think, I think the, the answer to that question is, we need to see how this works, and see where, where this document puts the town. I, I, you know, I don't think the cemetery committee was a very effective group the last time around, that we had them working for us, and, and working on the town's behalf. What's asked of them, this is a very.
Well, they never met.
Well, and they were pretty appointed based on the, weren't they all part, on the committee because they were the, they were associated with one of the six cemeteries?
They were supposed to have been, but that didn't, by the time I came in around it, that was, that somewhat had gone to the, into the way, the way back. I, I think that we are in a great position now, we have rules that make sense, we have a, a, a fee schedule that makes sense. We're going to be able to, we've inputted ninety-nine point nine percent of Rockville into the software that we were talking about, that'll allow us to track all of this and eventually go online. So Rockville is just about done.
Just starting West Rockport, so within the next few weeks.
Right, so I don't, you know, I think there's a lot of things that committees can do, but we've gotten more done in the last four years than we did the last fourteen, so I, I would like to give, I'd like to give our staff a try to be able to kind of keep moving the ball forward on this. That doesn't mean we're not open to ideas and open to talking about things, and obviously ultimately these rules documents need to come back to you. If the board feels like they need a group that is here to, you know, support and, and work through policies and, and of that matter, that's certainly, that's your, you know, that's up to the five of you. I, at this point, I think it's, I think it'd be premature, but I, I do think that we, I think we've made great headway, and I'd like to see what we can do. I think there will come a point, though, once this is in effect, and once we've got that program going, where it will be more of a maintenance mode, and it'll be more of a, okay, how do different pieces of this intersect with policy that the town wants to pursue? Right now, this is, it's staff-driven, has its pros, because it works faster, it also has its cons, because it's not very representative of the community, so.
West Rockport and Rockville have their own committees, and each spring they meet, and Ben and I go to their meetings, and they give us their list of issues, questions, just so that he and I are both there, and they know what I'm working on and what I'm doing, and same goes for him when he's out there working, and even, I don't know, as though Glen Cove has a committee, but they do have a group, and when that accident happened, I immediately called one of them and said, just so you know, this is going on, we're, we're on it. So we don't, we don't necess, you know, we don't have our committee, but we do keep in touch with the other cemeteries very closely.
So, kind of an unrelated note, John, you're right now the sexton officially, is that part of the town charter? Or is that, where, where does that come in?
It's not in the charter.
It's an appointment. Yeah.
I guess where I'm going with it, John, is
Yeah.
is this something you could get off your plate, and maybe we could make the town clerk the sexton going forward?
Oh, you like, boy, she's gonna be happy to hear.
Well, I mean, Liz is the most, you know, she's up to her eyeballs in all this.
Yeah, that's right.
All the time, and she seems to be the best equipped. I'm, I'm, I'm flattering you, Liz, and I'm also helping John try to take something off his plate.
I thank you. Yeah, no, I, I think, well, the other thing that I would maybe just add, and we haven't talked about Ben's role in this, so, so Ben Pratt, who's, who is our assistant sexton, he is the, so he, as a, as a.
I call him boots on the ground.
He, yeah, he's, yeah, he's boots on the ground, he's, he's the one who's out there who's seeing the cemeteries, he's in all the cemeteries all the time. When he sees issues, he brings them to light, that's when Liz and I get involved or in conversation. You know, Liz, there's sort of a two-handed approach, you have the boots on the ground, and then you have the lot sales, and that's somewhat how that, how that has worked over time, whether it was Linda or it was Brenda Richardson before, that's somewhat how it's been, David Farley was our sexton, or assistant sexton for, for many years. That's been the, the mechanism, I don't know if it's necessarily the right mechanism, but that's been the mechanism, right? So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I don't feel any sort of deep-seated desire to hold on to cemeteries, it's part of my, you know. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to help you delegate, John.
I'm with you, no, I'm, I love it. I have one thing that I just noticed, see if it makes sense, in the definitions, where it says lot owner, says lot owner shall mean a person or persons who purchase a plot or plots. Should it be revised to who purchased the rights to bury or burial rights for a certain plot? So nobody will think, oh, we own that land.
Right, right, it is a common misconception.
Yeah, something along those lines.
Yeah, that would help.
Who purchased the burial rights.
That allows to make one change in here, Liz.
So Michael, you're looking at lot owner?
Yes.
What section?
So say, a person or persons who purchased the burial rights to a particular plot or plots. Or would you wanna put that into the, the space, the, the one below, the lot, plot, or burial space? Whereas the lot owner is the person, and then that's what the space is, and so maybe you should better describe what the space is.
Just the burial rights.
Maybe both, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, means a subdivision of land. See that, almost looks against.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
Means the right.
Of fourteen of that document.
Where's the initial?
Thank you. Page fourteen of the document.
Just looking for the original terminology that we use.
It's like it's page sixty-five of the, of the overall thing.
Means the burial right.
I'm cracking up, oh, boy.
Well, cemeteries will do that, it's okay.
You know, right?
Rather than putting the exact language at this moment, can we ask that that be revised to reflect the fact that you're purchasing a burial right, not land?
Yeah, we've done at any point, yeah.
Move to approve cemetery rules as amended on section twenty-one with lot owner definition.
Or lot, a lot, plot, or burial space definition, I think is really large.
Lot, okay, I move to approve cemetery rules as amended, section twenty-one definitions for a lot, plot, or.
Burial space?
Burial space.
Could be revised.
To be limited, to be limited to the burial right, not the real estate.
Correct, what Denise said. And approve the schedule of fees as of November first while allowing sales of one lot per resident under the existing fee schedule.
Okay, is there a second, Michael?
Yeah, then can we just have a discussion too, I found a couple more questions in here.
Okay, so further discussion, and I guess that's where you'll bring up your questions.
So the definition of resident, is a person who's registered to vote in Rockport and/or pay real estate property taxes. So I could be not a full.
So a summer resident who pays property taxes can, is a resident.
That or resident.
Yeah, we, he, we went over that, the three of us, for quite a while, and decided, right, that if you pay real estate taxes.
I think that's the right outcome, because it's the taxpayer, the property taxpayers are the ones who are really funding the cemeteries. So just because you're not paying state income tax.
Right, right.
But again, I'm not trying to split hairs, but somebody could come in, just have bought a property, and.
Buy a lot and sell the house before.
Yeah, I mean.
They really took any taxes.
That would be flipping something, yeah.
I, just, just to get, I don't know, they wouldn't do that necessarily, it's just not worth it for a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I think.
But, okay, I, I guess it's, but if somebody's, somebody's got multiple properties, they're like, say, a Camden resident, they would qualify for resident rate.
If they're paying property taxes in Rockland.
Property in the town of Rockport.
Which I have, there's some that have done that, yeah.
Well, there's probably a lot of people that are in that situation where they've got properties, multiple properties.
And the spread that we've now intro, that were intro, could be introduced, is going to test this to an even greater degree than what we've already seen. You know, the fact that you're gonna go from eleven fifty to twenty-eight hundred for a single grave lot is going to cause people to twist the bounds of that.
How they could somehow be a resident.
I don't know if it goes far as, you know, the house, but, but they will, they're gonna test Liz on this, for sure. Here's a question along those lines. I know. If a resident of a nearby town just has a business in Rockport.
They're paying tax.
That wouldn't qualify, it would have to be a residential property?
No.
Well, I don't say that.
Property tax.
So just property tax.
So, so, so if a business is paying property tax? Yep. So we, whoever owns the business. Yep.
And, and the.
Yep, because they're paying property tax, you know?
And the plot owner, again, just to clarify, I can, gee, my arms are on all this. The plot owner is the person that's buried there, right?
No.
No.
I could buy a plot.
I could buy a plot.
I could buy a plot and bury you in my plot.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you're charitable.
Whoever, whoever went in and paid the town and got the certificate.
I, I guess it's funny because, uh, somebody who's a resident could, and a taxpayer could buy a plot and then bury somebody from out of town in it.
Sure, yeah.
If they gave them permissions.
Save the fifteen hundred or whatever.
Most likely it's probably something like a grandparent.
That's exactly what it is.
And a grandparent might buy like six lots for her kids or his kids and, and then their grandkids.
I tried to buy. Get married and decide they don't want the plot and, yeah, it's. I tried to buy four lots for my two kids and my husband and I, and Linda would only sell me two lots. She said I was being greedy to want more than two lots. It was like.
We have a new sheriff in town now.
We do, we do. So it got very. But I think your section has gotten a little full. Yeah, yeah. Well, she told me she was going to keep space between my lots and the next so I could still have this. I didn't get it in writing though, sorry.
Well, yeah, let's hope you have many years to settle that.
I'm, I'm, yeah. Anyway.
It's been interesting.
I digress.
Bob's got a question.
Further questions should be submitted to whom? Questions on this topic should be submitted, a lot of clarification needs.
To Liz.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You know where I am.
Yeah, you know how to find Liz. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I just raise one question? So the note, the motion that was drafted for this, or this section suggests that the fee schedule would start as of November first and allowing a maximum of one lot per resident under the existing fee schedule.
Correct.
So the idea just, just, I, we haven't talked about that, but I just want to make sure that the people understand what the rules are.
Yes, so that people don't line up with Liz tomorrow and try to get cheap lots.
Between now and November first, you can purchase one lot, one plot at today's rate.
Right. So we, there are people who have, let's say speculated in the past. And that's, that's a very real thing, it happens. And, and so we don't, we don't want to encourage that. But there are people out there who, you know, we're not talking about a Camden resident who is, will, you know, willing to pay twenty-eight hundred dollars. This is a resident who going from three fifty to five hundred is, is a struggle. And, and they're out there and, and so we want to make sure those, the idea that this section is really, to give them an opportunity, they've got a few, couple of weeks here, if that's the, the motion to come in, buy your, you know, buy your lot and, and under that, under the old rules. Uh, but only one lot, so you know, there's, there's a boundary around it. So I just, I just want to make sure that's clear, but all other sections of this would be, uh, you know, would be in effect today. Or, well, yeah, today.
Right. So anyone Ben showed plots to prior to today?
Yeah.
Is still on the old price?
No.
Everybody up until.
Everybody except for this, except for the one lot.
So he showed lots. Up to October thirty-first. Two, a week and a half ago. They just haven't come in to pay me, so.
I think we should talk about that, but I think the idea is one lot at, at the, at the resident rate.
But, but that was like a.
That's not in the motion right now.
That was like a deal being done, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but not.
It's not completed.
Depends on if there's been a verbal commitment or whatever.
Until they pay.
It was just meeting with, with our assistant sexton to say, this is the area and then.
But there are people who come in and meet with the assistant sexton and they come in six months later.
Yeah.
So it's not, until they pay, it's not final.
Yep.
Not to be, you know, but let's talk about it.
And you know, to speak to, I always speak very highly of Ben, as the town of Rockport, John knows, we are so lucky to have him.
We are.
Um, I don't know anybody in that age group that works as hard as he does, that he is out there on weekends. I mean, he'll send me a message, forget it's Saturday, and ask me who's plot somebody is and Ben, I don't carry maps. Um, but we, I just, I can't say enough about, about him. I wish he had come, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Good to know that too.
So do we have the, all that language in the motion?
Yes, that's what Kim.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, everybody's okay with the motion as presented, um, all those in favor? Okay, four zero.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Liz, for all the work on this.
They would be cheering otherwise.
The most important person stayed. Um, okay, moving right along. Next we have act on general assistance maximums. So we just, we had this special hearing for that, yeah. Um, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the board to adopt the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six general assistance ordinance and appendices as presented.
Okay, and a second, Kim.
So can we have a quick discussion on this? I was kind of trying to wade through all this to figure out, I think I understand what we're doing. We're allowing for accepting.
I don't think we have a lot of, this, this is like handed to us from the state, right?
We don't, yeah, but we're not changing anything with our current rates for general assistance.
Well, we're changing them as mandated by the state.
Up to their maximum.
Yeah.
And if we wanted to go higher, we could. But we, I mean, that, that gives us, we're allowed to.
Right.
In certain areas, depending on their stats and all that stuff.
Yes, but this, the way the ordinance is written and the way state law reads is that annually you have the option to update the amounts um, per what DHHS provides you, which is what is a part of your packet, which includes the overall maximums, how much for electric, how much for housing, how much for food. And annually you have to hold a public hearing and you have the right to update your, this section of your ordinance, your, your general assistance ordinance to update these amounts.
Okay.
And so it's, but it's very performant. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a rubber stamp moment.
These are the rates they have established.
Yep. And just, and I always say this, but just as, as a, for instance, the maximum that we're talking about is nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for a month. One person. Nine hundred and seventy-two dollars does not get you a whole lot in the state of Maine.
Nine seventy-two all in?
All in, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Family of four, four, fifteen ninety-seven.
That's something anyway.
Yeah, it's something, right? I will also note, this is, we have seen a, a considerable reduction in the amount of general assistance requested in, in town since the change of the two, um, motels. That's, it's changed our outlook completely. And, you know, a year ago, we had a very different conversation about this issue. Uh, in fact, it was the, this night of, of that, that conversation. And so, um, it just shows how much can change in a year. And, and also why it's so difficult for small towns to adjust because such a shift is, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's a big change.
I appreciate the patience of the residents as we work through that and continue to.
Yeah, and thank you to the business owners too, because that's made a big difference to our town. Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, four zero. Next is act on supplemental tax bill. So this looks like a situation where a property went from being owned by a, a tax-exempt nonprofit to a taxpayer, but we didn't.
But we didn't know about the second parcel.
Yeah.
Right.
How many years did we go actually, John?
Uh, we, we, this goes back to maximum, but we could go back, which is three.
Three, but.
Yeah.
And it goes back, twenty-twenty-one is when the purchase.
So we only missed one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any way to avoid that. I mean, I understand it was just sort of a oversight, but it's a shame to lose a year of tax revenue.
It is, absolutely.
Just got to watch the, um, deed transfer section in Midcoast Village or every.
From nonprofits, from nonprofits.
Nonprofit to. Yeah, and I think, I guess it must have been a little more complicated than that because it was this adjacent parcel. Anyway, the good news is we're at least going to recoup three years.
And this is not related, it's the other direction, but we, with the sale of the Camden National.
Yep.
Headquarters, and that's going to become a nonprofit.
Then that'll come off our tax rolls.
And that'll come off our, we're going to, do we, have we calculated what that difference is?
No, because, I mean, they.
I think the paper put in at least what their prior tax bill had been.
Forty-six or fifty, one of those numbers.
Forty-six hundred, fifty-two hundred, it was a thousand, it was a thousand.
What are we talking about?
Multiples of ten of that.
I know the location of the building.
Yeah, so it's been sold to the Anker Church, so it's going to be a nonprofit that's going to own this formerly business property.
So that'll be a hundred percent nonprofit activity then.
Church is kind of across the street, right, on Route ninety?
The old Farmers Fair Building.
Yeah.
So they'll be, they'll, they'll have to make application to the assessor, who will then review as to whether or not that they comply as a, a nonprofit to, to remove. Um, you know, the, the, you know, make that property non, you know, non-taxable. And there's a process that will go through that and I don't know when that occurs or how long that occurs. And then, of course, there's something that will occur with the Anker Church property, the former Anker Church property and what that becomes, which could, you know, go a different way, so.
It could become a tax.
Okay, they're not just expanding.
No.
They're not a move.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, so I'm not really sure, John, you know, to answer your question, I'm not really sure. There's, there's a couple of steps that have to happen, but also there's, there's a net number that, that may be different, which I'm hoping will be the case.
No, understood.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt the motion.
Okay, so, um, do we have a motion?
Well, I thought we already.
I don't think we've done the motion on this yet.
Sorry.
I, I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve this supplemental tax bill as presented.
Okay, great. Second, Kim. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Four zero. Next is act on liquor license renewal, special amusement and off-premise catering permit backup authorization. So this, as I understand it, is in, i- if Randy is not available
Yep.
um, to sign these permit applications, and I think they're referred to as fairly mundane permit applications, um, can we authorize, uh, the department, the police chief, the police department's lieutenant?
Who is the sergeant?
Jimmy Moore.
Oh, Jimmy is.
So he's, so you have the first and third ranked, but not the second ranked in the, in the department, so.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't have a lieutenant, but.
Now we do, so let's fill that in so he can, Chris can act on that.
Yep.
Okay.
I move to approve, approve authorizing the lieutenant to approve liquor license renewal applications, special amusement permit applications, and off-premise catering permit applications in the absence of the police chief and sergeant.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Four zero, great. All right, I guess we've moved.
Can I make a motion?
You can't yet unless you, we have to make sure there are no liaison reports.
Oh, thank you.
No way?
Oh, liaison reports.
I just have a small, a small, um, conservation commission had a very nice presentation last week. And one of the items on it was the Emerald Ash Borer plague that's happening and expanding. And to bring it to our attention because it's not here in our town yet, but it's in Belfast and it's below us. And apparently these Emerald Ash Bowers, they infect the trees, make them very brittle, and then they break and branches fall and trees fall over. And if it's anything in the public right of way or things like that, it's something as a town we should be aware of. Camden, I think since twenty seventeen, has been working on this, inventorying the trees that they want to protect and keep and all this. So bringing this to light because it's something we're going to have to be prudent about and, and look into.
So is there a way to prevent them?
You can inject in the soils, trees that you want to save. But for the most part, if they're tree, if they're a bunch of ash trees like in the woods or whatever, who cares? You know? So those ones just, it happens.
Yeah.
And of course this restricts us on transporting the wood. And we are in part of the quarantine zone, even though we're not infected yet. So wood could come into us, you know, fire would blow, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Other?
That's the only one.
You did, you covered harbor committee for me.
Oh, gosh, oh, I don't have enough brain power to come up with a report. It was a nice meeting though, it was a nice meeting. I, I.
Did they talk about the recommendations that we voted for tonight? Is that? Or had they already done this?
I remember it was on the agenda.
All right, that's it.
I was impressed though.
Yeah. John?
Briefly, the planning board, uh, this last meeting, last month, we approved the findings of fact on the Habitat project. Got Commercial Street for ten units. Um, there's already, and, and so that's off and running. There's a lot of activity underway to clear the site right now in anticipation of the construction to begin, uh, in earnest. I'm expecting, you know, I actually was over there today just poking around and it's pretty impressive how quickly they're moving, so that one's moving right along. The last report I gave, I anticipated a pre-application coincidentally from the Midcoast Regional Housing Trust for a, um, four duplex eight-unit project that they wanted to do on Granite Way, but that apparently is not going to go forward. It's been delayed indefinitely. So we thought we had one, but guess not. So what's, what's going on with the planning board? Um, comprehensive plan implementation task force, as I alluded to earlier, um, we're working, uh, we're meeting weekly, um, pretty methodically, uh, really on task, trying to make our way through the hundred and fifty-five goals outlined in the comp plan. And, uh, we're hopefully on pace to complete it, complete, um, our recommendations to the various committees because the ones that are going to actually be responsible for the goals is not the task force, but the committees. So our goal is to get our work done in, pretty much in November so that we can then come to the select board or to the committees or both and recommend certain things for their work plan for the coming year. As far as, you know, okay, in the next twelve months, we want you to, you know, we think you should focus on this. But that will be the select board's direction to them, but we'll make the recommendation to the select board. So that's our process of what we're going through and I hope it works.
Okay.
So far it's very promising. Bob, who just left, has been doing a great job, uh, chairing the committee, keeping everybody on task and keeping everybody motivated, so it's great. Harbor Strategic Plan Committee, we already heard about that and again, shout out to everybody involved. They did an exceptional job on that and it moved right along, you know? Uh, we got a great plan. It was only like, what, start to finish, John, seven months?
Yeah.
Seven, eight months.
Phenomenal, phenomenal. New record.
Particularly, I think, when I've looked at other towns that they did plans for, I think ours, I have to say, ours is best.
Very unbiased.
My last liaison is Midcoast Council of Governments. There's a general assembly for the, uh, Midcoast Council on November twentieth at the Alzett Transportation Museum. I don't know, other members might want to think about attending, depending on what's on the, um, agenda, but it's an all-day general assembly. I've never been to one before, John, because I'm a newbie, so. Not sure if it's the kind of thing that other select board members would be interested in.
Yeah, I, yeah, if, if you have interest, let me know. I'll, I'll reach out to Matt and make sure you're on the list.
Okay. And then before I lose the mic, I just want to do a special thanks to the Public Works for adding a crosswalk signage on Pascal Avenue. A number of residents were worried about their safety and I talked to Mike about it and he said, I'll, I'll get that done. And before I could even think about it again, I was driving down the street and the signs are up, so.
Like it when that happens. I do.
Oh, I do have one other thing though. I did mention the cable, John, that is been dangling. been dangling on Pascal Avenue, right above the harbor. It's right in front of, um, Charbonneau's.
Okay.
My wife was actually out for a walk when she, a truck drove by and snapped it and she almost got hit with the thing whipping around.
Oh, jeez.
But it's been that, hanging there for at least two years.
Oh.
And it's just a cable, cable, but it's, it's a tract of nuisance at this point, so I put in my vote to just go out and snip it, will you please?
I know nothing.
I, I did wanna update, uh, Harbor Committee, they did talk about some of the things that are spoken of tonight, like specifically the, the floats and the storage and the boats and there were a couple of adjustments. A couple people's boats aren't gonna be able to be where they have been and so they, those things were all taken care of or addressed.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks, John.
I got nothing. I wasn't at the Harbor Committee, um, Michael covered for me, so
That's great.
And no ZVA, so.
Okay, great. And I don't think I have, in the library in Parks are pretty quiet, so.
Well
All right, so now, Michael.
There's one more thing on here.
Yes, do you have, do you, do you have a motion for us?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the board adjourned the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Second is Kim. All those in favor?
Further discussion?
All right, thank you.
Yes.